Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call on Board Member Anita Sharp to open our meeting.
If you would, please join me in the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
We are now at approval of the agenda, but do have one change. The sole source contracts under the consent agenda are now being put under action item B.
Move the agenda.
Sarah second?
Second.
Please vote. Sorry, Lisa, she's not ready.
I did.
Thank you, Kate. She's got to ask her.
Madam Chair, did you remember taking to a...
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Deborah Napper is on the phone, Lisa. Okay. Hold on, we'll just put them up there and then have Deborah vote. Or should we have her vote now? Okay, Deborah? Thank you. All right, we're now at the consent agenda. Dr. Contreras?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. This evening's consent agenda includes one item, the personnel report. That concludes this evening's consent agenda for your consideration.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
For a second, please vote. Thank you. Deborah?
Yes.
Thank you. I also like to say I'm sorry, but Pat Tillman will not be with us this evening. We are now at action items. Dr. Contreras?
Thank you. This evening, we have an action item for your review with three recommendations on school opening, health and safety recommendations for August 2021. We have this evening our new senior director for health, who is Dr. Nancy Gerardo, who will be coming forward presenting with Dr. Nora Carr. And we have Dr. Julia Van from the Health Department, who will be presenting as well. Not presenting, but answering your questions about the recommendation. So if you would come forward.
While you're getting ready for that, I didn't announce the... It was seven to one. Last motion on the consent agenda, the personal report passed by a vote of seven to one.
Dr. Van, I just want to clarify. You'll be giving some background information. And then Dr. Gerardo and Dr. Carr will go over the three recommendations for the board's consideration. And all three are available to answer the board's questions.
All right, let's see. Can you all hear me okay? All right, thank you so much, Chairwoman Hayes. I appreciate you having me here tonight. And thank you, the rest of the board, for giving me an opportunity to give you a little bit of an update on where we are with the COVID-19 metrics in Guilford County. I know it's been a while since I've last seen you. So I'm excited to be here with you tonight. I'm going to just start by giving you an update on some of the data that we have for Guilford County. And then after the team gives the recommendations, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. So as far as the cases are concerned of COVID-19, in the last three weeks, we have seen an increase in the number of cases that we're seeing every week. Last week, we've had days in which we've identified 78, 85 new cases a day, which is... These are numbers that we have not recorded since April of this year. Before the number started rising, we were seeing somewhere around 15 to 20 new cases a day. And now the curve, what we call an acceleration curve, is up very obvious in the epidemiological curve that we're looking at. So the number of new cases in Guilford County is definitely on the rise. When we also look at the positivity rate, and we've talked a lot as a team about positivity rate and what it is and what it means, we've had, over the summer, one of our lowest positivity rate was at 1.3%, which was great. And since the beginning of July, we're seeing our positivity rate continuing to increase to almost 4.5% for the last 14 consecutive days. It is still under the 5%, which has been our cutoff mark for the last year and a half. However, it took only two weeks for this positivity rate to get to this number. So it is incredibly concerning that so many people in our community are getting tested for COVID-19, and now they're testing positive for that. We continue to capture this data on our Guilford County Health Department's data dashboard. So anybody that is interested in looking at these metrics and the progression of the metrics over time, we have those listed on the website as well. As far as the hospitalizations, that is another metric that we're looking at. And we continue to stay in very close contact with our healthcare systems. And just to give you a little bit of an idea of the progression of those hospitalizations in the last three weeks, at the beginning of July, there were six individuals in our healthcare system that were hospitalized due to COVID-19. As of today, we have 37 individuals that are hospitalized. So even in this particular metric, we are seeing increases. The numbers are definitely going into the wrong direction with that metric as well. So overall, all of the metrics that we have been reporting on and keeping an eye on for the last year and a half are not moving in the right direction like they have been so far. This is not only for Guilford County. This is... We're not in a bubble. We're not seeing these rises in cases independently from what we're seeing in other counties and in North Carolina as a whole. There are... We continue to operate or we continue to look at the report that we're getting from the White House, the White House Task Force, as well as the North Carolina DHHS that put the counties in a four category... In four categories based on the community transmission. And as of today, Guilford County is at considerably transmission, which is that orange category right before the red, which is the highest level of transmission. We have stayed in green and yellow for a period of time. And now with the metrics moving in the wrong direction, it has led for our county to be considered considerably community transmission as well. The next part that I want to talk about is the... Oh, and another data metric that we also look at that just weaves in with all of the other metrics is some of the measurements of wastewater that is being analyzed from a particular wastewater treatment. Also, follow those same trends. We're seeing more particles of COVID-19 in that wastewater, which pretty much shows the same information that there is more COVID in our community. There are more cases. But it's not pinpointed to one person. It's more of a general idea of community transmission. As far as the vaccinations are concerned, these are always taken since we've started our COVID-19 vaccination response. We always look at the vaccination numbers in balance with our metrics. And as of yesterday, when I was able to look at the numbers, as far as our percent of total population in Guilford County, 52.4% of our population have received at least one dose of the vaccine in a two-dose series, and 45.5% are fully vaccinated. I would like to emphasize the fact that 45.5% is fully vaccinated of our total population. When we look at the numbers slightly differently and we're talking about individuals who are eligible to be vaccinated, meaning that they're 12 and older, we have slightly different numbers. 61.1% of them have received at least one dose of vaccine, and 53.1% are fully vaccinated. Because we know that we have... We're eliminating a lot of those younger children that at this time are not eligible to be vaccinated. We're seeing increase in percentages of vaccinations. But in reality, we need to look at total population vaccination numbers because those children are in our community. They live with their families. They can be infected. They can transmit the disease as well, even if it's not at the same rate that adults do. So in reality, our community vaccination percent is 45.5% of people that are fully vaccinated, including the total population for Guilford County. So that's why I wanted to stress this particular number because it's important to take this into consideration with the metrics that we're seeing as well. There are some projections and some forecasted numbers, number of cases for the next three weeks through the COVID-19 dashboard on the CDC's website that show that for the next three consecutive weeks, our numbers are going to continue to rise all the way to approximately 200 cases a day at the end of these three weeks. So if we're at 84 cases, let's say today, we're anticipating that in the next three weeks, we'll see 200 new cases a day. So we're on that steep incline of that metric there as well. So this concludes the information around metrics and numbers that I wanted to share with you today. It's 3 o'clock today. We also heard from the CDC's Director, Dr. Walensky, which made different recommendations around masks. There are... The CDC now recommends that everybody indoors is wearing a face covering regardless of their vaccination status or regardless of their vaccination status. And also in K-12 schools, that all children and staff and teachers in the K-12 schools are going to wear a face covering regardless of their vaccination status. This just came out today. And we were able to take a look at the information in the guidance that was shared with us right before this meeting today. So I can share that with you tonight. So with that...
Before we take questions, I'd like to ask Dr. Gerardo to please read the three recommendations to the board, giving Dr. Van's information.
Good evening, members of the board. Our recommendation, number one, is approving universal mask requirements inside Guilford County school buildings for the academic year 2021, 2022. Universal mask requirements should be reviewed at the end of each academic quarter every 10 weeks. The second recommendation is implementing mandatory COVID-19 testing for students and staff who are not fully vaccinated, who also participate in athletic and high-risk extracurricular activities consistent with CDC and NCDHHS guidance. The third recommendation is collect and maintain vaccination status for all Guilford County schools employees, all Guilford County schools student athletes and coaches, and all Guilford County schools student participants in high-risk extracurricular activities.
Thank you. And you have that memo.
Thank you. Linda?
The second one is mandate testing. Is that what that said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify. I got that first word correct.
Just for athletes and high-risk sports. So for athletes who are not vaccinated.
All right, well, that wasn't clear. So only athletes.
Right, athletes who are not vaccinated. And for high-risk activities, extracurricular activities. So that would be activities like marching band and chorus.
Okay. Activities that require a large amount of exhalation of air, which is how the virus spreads. And the third one is knowing the vaccination status of all staff and students? Or just staff?
Only students and athletes.
Still on athletes, okay.
A high risk.
Okay, because that's the reason I want to clarify.
But we would request it of all employees. I think that part you had correctly.
All right, so it is employees and athletes.
I believe you're going to require it of all employees. Because you'll have to know the status in order to do the appropriate protocol.
Right, as you recall, if you're vaccinated, the quarantine rules are very different than if you're unvaccinated. In fact, you do not have to quarantine. If you're exposed to somebody with COVID and you are vaccinated, unless you have some kind of symptoms, which will make a huge difference in terms of staffing and continuity of instruction for kids.
Right. And I just wanted to say, before we get into all of the questions, that the recommendations are our efforts to keep schools open as long as we can and to have enough staffing to transport students to school. You may recall, we had more than 150 bus drivers out and could not transport students. And to make sure that we have enough teachers and support staff in the buildings to keep our schools open, our ACEs program open after school. If staff are quarantined, students are quarantined, we can't keep schools open. So that's our goal with these recommendations.
And I think the critical factor in the background materials provided that hasn't been highlighted, although it's certainly highlighted in the memo and the complete report to the legislature, is included in the board materials, which points to the importance of masking. Is that in the major North Carolina study that involved over 100 school districts and more than a significant number of students and teachers, what the researchers at Duke University at the ABC Science Collaborative found was that masking is what made the critical difference. They had schools in the study that had no social distancing. They had schools in the study that had three feet. They had schools in the study that had six feet. They had schools in the study that had cohorts, very small groups. They had schools in the study that weren't able to cohort at all. And the ones that did really well, even if community numbers, as Dr. Van indicated, are increasing, had a dramatically different rate inside schools. And it was directly attributed to the universal masking policy and the consistency with which our educators and our students and staff followed it. That's a really key point as you make your consideration tonight.
Yeah, Chairwoman... Madam Chair, if it's okay, if I add just a couple of things before we take questions that I omitted initially, which is really important. I've talked a lot about numbers, but I didn't talk about the Delta variant. I think that it's critically important for us to think about the progression of the virus in our community and where we are right now with this new variant that we're seeing infections. So I know that there are questions around the change in guidance, for example, which two months ago was different than the way it is right now. However, two months ago, less than 1% of the new infections were with the Delta variant. Whereas right now, we are seeing approximately 85% of the new infections with this new variant. And why is that important? It is 66% more infections than the Alpha variant that we were seeing in the spring, which was 66% more infections than the previous variant, which started the pandemic. So we know that as these variants progress, they're following that type of survival of the fittest. And as the variants are becoming more common in the community, more than likely, they're going to be more transmissible and more infectious. So Delta variant right now is more infections than the other, the two previous variants that we have seen before. Another key point about this new variant is that it can also cause worse symptoms in younger population. The previous variants were very much of concern to our older population. But now we're seeing this particular one affecting our 25 to 40 age groups more. I apologize. More than the previous one. So there are concerns about the way that the new virus acts in our communities as well. And the vaccine continued to be incredibly safe and efficient. However, there is a slight decrease in efficiency with the Delta variant, where it can allow for that transmission to happen more in our community. So I just wanted to make sure that I bring up the information that we have right now as far as the Delta variant is concerned.
Okay. All right, the new cases that... Because I was going to get to kind of that discussion on that, since you did not mention it. But of the new cases, you said we went to like 80 cases a week, something like that?
A day.
A day.
Yes.
And then, you know, we have increased from 6 to 37. Can we determine, is that the Delta variant? Or is that still a mixture of... Can you tell the difference between the old COVID versus the Delta?
Yes, so that there is a way that that can be done. Right now, we are having... We have an estimation that 85% of these new cases are Delta variant. Not every single test is being broken down, let's say, to see if it's the Delta variant or not. But enough of those tests are done in order to extrapolate the fact that now the majority of the cases are Delta variant.
Okay. And what age group are we seeing this new movement in the virus? I mean, are we seeing it in young children? Is it the 18 to 25? Is it... Where are we at?
Yes, so we are seeing it in a younger population. We're seeing it in specifically more the 25 to 40. But then absolutely, we're seeing it in the, let's say, 15 to 25 as well. The proportions are not the same, but there is an increase in the number of cases that we're seeing in that younger group than we were seeing last year around this time.
Do you have any idea of where the population is? Or, you know, like, you know, is it that group that they're socializing? Is it they're in school? Is it... Do we have any idea of the environment of where they're moving forward with it?
Sure, so every case continues to be investigated by our case investigator. So we're absolutely asking those questions about high-risk environments, mask-wearing, vaccination status, and so on and so forth. But because we are at such a high level of community transmission, it is incredibly difficult sometimes to pinpoint exactly where that individual has been exposed in order for them to become positive. So it can be in a variety of different settings. It can be at a family function. It can be in the backyard because they were just, you know, playing with the neighbor. Or it can be at work. It can be in so many different settings. We're seeing it in daycares. We're seeing it in camps. Camps have been a hot area of new cases as well. So it's a lot of different environments.
Right, are you saying camps with young children? Are the young children getting it? Or is it the leads?
Yeah, both, adults and children in day camps, summer camps, yes.
Okay. Well, I've got more specific questions about the... How Guilford County is going to handle something. So I want to give people that want more information about the actual what's going on to have that opportunity. I'll have more specific questions about how Guilford County is going to do things later. Does that make sense?
Diane, followed by Kim and Anita.
How you doing?
Good, how about you?
All righty. Can you speak to the deadliness of the new virus?
Yes, so it is... We continue to see deaths in Guilford County. We know that the vaccinations also play a very important part in the way that our hospitalizations and our deaths are happening right now. So even if we know that the Delta variant is more infectious and it can cause worse symptoms than the previous ones, we also have people that are actually vaccinated right now. So we know that if you are vaccinated, you have 3.5% or 3.5 chances of getting ill. You have approximately eight times less chances of being hospitalized because of COVID. And you have about 25% less chance to die of COVID, or 25 decreased risk of dying because of COVID if you are vaccinated. So I think that we're at a different plane field than we were before when we talk about the deaths. But we are losing people to COVID as we speak. And those particular situations are probably because of the Delta variant.
So what you were telling us is that this thing is still deadly?
Yes.
Okay. Aside from the recommendations that I assume that you are in support of, that Guilford County may adopt, what do you recommend that we as a public do? Because it appears, just from my observation, that we've just kind of gone back to the way things, you know, were. I mean, there are mask gatherings. There are, you know, I don't know whether people are still using the three Ws. I mean, do these things matter anymore?
Yes, absolutely, they do. And that's one of the messages that we are continuing to put out there. I know that it is really difficult being in this space for the last year and a half. But we continue to share the same educational information and the same, let's say, outreach to our community. So the three Ws continue to be incredibly important. But what is even more important is that at this point in time, we do have the vaccine that is going to... It is going to be incredibly important to help us move through the pandemic. So if I can continue to share information with our community, that's one of the main points that I would like to make right now, to get vaccinated as soon as possible. The cases are going to continue to rise, so we need to be protected. And if you did get that one dose of vaccine, make sure to go back and get your second one.
Yeah. I know that you probably have one... Yeah, I know that you probably have on a website, your website, where people can get the vaccinations, right? Is there a way for us to include that information so that we at least try to keep pushing out there where the availability is, whether people have got to get appointments or not? I think we're past the appointment stage right now, right? No?
No, you can still get appointments. In fact, we've been partnering very closely with the Public Health Department in sharing, they have a campaign, and we've been sharing all their information and materials in as many ways as we can think of and will continue to do so, and reminded principals about all of the protocols that we need to follow, as well as the importance of continuing to promote vaccination as a key preventive strategy.
Will we still be able to do some of the vaccinations sites at schools, or is that going to be?
Yes, ma'am, that's continuing, that's already happening. Dr. Patterson can probably speak more to that, or Dr. Gerardo might have the schedule or we can get that to you, but I know that that's been happening all summer and will continue to do so. What we also know is that, you know, those are attracting much smaller numbers. We're going to keep doing them because it's important, but at this point, as one of Dr. Van's staff members said, we have to celebrate the small victories. So the days of, you know, getting 200 people to show up at a site or more are over, and right now, it's coming in 10, 15 at a time, 40 people in a whole day. It's a slow slog, and we're just going to have to keep slogging and do as much outreach as all of us collectively can.
Just as, I don't know how fast your turnaround is to set up, but there are going to be at least three that I know of, back-to-school backpack giveaway sites that are scheduled for August. Is it possible, or is the turnaround too great to connect with these folk? Because those parents are going to come get those book bags so that we can perhaps coordinate with those community efforts that are going to be out there?
If you would share with me where the community events will be, I'll be more than happy to coordinate vaccination clinics for those particular events. The only, let's say, barrier would be if we already have something scheduled for that day and there's a conflict, but other than that, any opportunity to vaccinate, we'll be more than happy to take it.
Okay. Is it okay if I get that to Dr. Carr? Will you still be here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Kim, then Anita.
You mentioned 37 hospitalizations. How many of them were children?
I do not have the data broken down by age, but I'll be more than happy to get with our healthcare system partners to find out more about that.
Are you still testing or only vaccinating?
No, we continue to do testing as well. We have plenty of testing opportunities in the community, including the Health Department.
In regard to the students that were at camps and that data, do you know if those students were wearing masks or not masked?
It is a, it was very hard to determine if they were wearing masks consistently, and the majority of them were not.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anita, then Deborah.
The CDC withdrew their request to the Food and Drug Administration for the emergency use of the 2019 novel coronavirus real-time diagnostic panel. In layman's terms, one form of the COVID testing, because it was not able to distinguish between a regular flu virus and the COVID virus. So that was one test that was withdrawn because it was, didn't give good results. Are there others?
So right now, I believe that you're talking about one of the rapid tests that are, that were being utilized. We are using what is called a PCR test, which is a molecular test that has almost 95% sensitivity to the COVID-19 or the SARS-CoV-2 virus.
Well, this is an RT-PCR diagnostic panel.
I will have to double-check that. I know that there are a variety of different tests, a variety of different manufacturers of the tests, so I would have to look at exactly which one of those tests was, the E-Way was taken away.
The current shots that are available, are they FDA-approved?
They all have emergency use authorization.
But not approval? For instance, if we're here again next year, is it, and the emergency, the emergency is over, are they approved?
So the way that the FDA goes through this process of approving it under an emergency use, so they're approved, they're just approved under a different practice, let's say. It does not coincide with an emergency order or some type of emergency declaration by a governor or another entity. The way that they approve different products, different medications, different testing or different devices is by answering four critical questions about that particular item. So, for example, for the vaccines, they have to answer the question, is the disease that is caused by this virus deadly, infectious, and serious? Is there anything else out there that can prevent this illness? Is this particular product that is being presented to us went through clinical trials and it shows it is safe and effective? And I have to admit, I cannot remember right off the top of my head what that fourth question is right now. So that's how they're looking at the information and they're making that determination for an emergency use authorization.
Okay. Why are children under 12 not eligible for the shot?
Because in the initial clinical trials, children were not included. Since then, they have conducted clinical three trials where children ages two and 12, from two to 12, have been included in those trials to find out about the effectiveness of the vaccine. So they're continuing with their knowledge-based process to find out exactly if the vaccine is going to be as effective in children as it is in adults. So we know that with the majority of vaccines or drugs or other pharmaceuticals, when you have a first clinical three trial, you try to eliminate pregnant and lactating women, and you try to eliminate children in order to have a base population that you're working with. And after that, you start working with some of the other populations to determine the safety and effectiveness of that particular product. So we are anticipating both Moderna, or I know for sure that Pfizer has submitted documentation to the FDA for expanding the age recommendation for Pfizer to be two years and up. Right now, we have not received information about the next decision process, but they have conducted the needed, they have the needed information for them to present it to the FDA.
Okay. Do we have data, you may have answered this, but I missed it. Do we have data on the transmission rate for children under 12?
I, can you please repeat the question?
Transmission rate for children under 12.
So I do not have that data prepared for you today, exactly as far as numbers are concerned, but we do know that children under 12 can be infected with COVID-19, they can get ill because of COVID-19, and they can also transmit COVID-19.
Can you get that? I mean, is it data that you can get?
Yeah, I will try to get that for you.
Okay, I have other questions, but they're more for staff, so I'm done for now.
Okay. Deborah, and then Betty. Can you, Betty, assist Deborah turning on the mic so she can ask her question?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, Dr. Burns, thank you for being here tonight. I did just want to ask a couple things for you to clarify, if you wouldn't mind, and some of this is information that was released by Cone Health, and I understand that you work with the Health Department, so if you don't have this information on hand, that's fine. Initial reports from Cone Health were saying that every individual that was currently admitted with a COVID diagnosis was unvaccinated, and they've gone back to saying that just a high percentage of the patients admitted with COVID right now are unvaccinated. Did we ever get clarification on how many patients or what percentage are vaccinated versus unvaccinated, is my first question, because I understand that that percentage is very high. And my next question is, I know that right now, we are dealing with the Delta variant, and that it does not look good, but I've also picked up on some research on yet another one coming through on its heels called Lambda. Are you informed on that one at all, and what can you tell us about it, please?
Sure. So for the, thank you for the question. So as far as the first question is concerned, I cannot speak for the Cone Health system, so for any additional information about their press release, I would definitely recommend that you reach out to them to provide additional information. However, regardless of the information that was shared from our healthcare system, I can share with you what is the process of gathering information about COVID-19 vaccinations. The Guilford County Health Department pretty much has the information about all Guilford County vaccinations that sometimes other entities may not at certain points in time. So I'm saying that to say that sometimes access to the data about, around vaccinations is not as easy for other entities as it is for the Health Department. As far as the second question that you mentioned, which is the information around the Lambda, there are a variety of other different variants. We have the Epsilon, the Gamma, Zeta, Eta, and then of course, the Lambda. At this point in time, there is a little bit of percentage in all cases of some of these other variants, but again, because of that tendency for the strongest one to prevail at one time, we are seeing that the Delta variant is the one that has the highest percentage. There are some cases with the other variants, like I've mentioned, including Lambda, but that is not the one that we're concerned about right now.
Deborah, is that all?
Yes, that's all I've got right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Betty?
That'd been, thank you very much for coming. Looking at this sounding number that you have, where it listed 15 through 85 a day, and was probably increased to 200 cases a day, and you talked about the age range, 15 to 25, then 25 to 40. Can you tell me what the percentage is in those two brackets?
I do not have that particular data right now. What I do have the breakdown of for that percentage is, I'm looking at my slides right now.
Okay.
I did not include that right now, so I am making a list of some of the items that I need to get back to y'all.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you. Linda?
Hi.
Do you want me to come back to you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We have a lot of parents that are concerned that this is going to be like the flu, that it's never going to go away, okay? And some of the parents are like, with children through the 18, 19 year, more children pass due to flu than they did through COVID. So, you know, parents are like, kind of, where is this end? You know, when, you know, at one time, we set a parameter of 5%, we're currently under that parameter now. You expect it to go up. However, you know, I'm still hearing that children are still a very low percentage of the problem, because what you're saying, what I heard, was this middle-aged group now, maybe between anywhere from 15 to 40, mainly between 25 and 40, from what I'm hearing. You know, some parents, you know, I've talked to a lot of parents, they feel it's very unhealthy for their children to be wearing these masks, especially young children, associated with the germs associated with it, associated with just everything that young children do. So, you know, one of the questions they have is, where do we see, you know, we've had, been vaccinated for, you know, well, there's vaccination for the flu, there's vaccinations for everything, and yet, we're not asking everybody to mask for flu. So, and especially in the younger gener, the younger demographic, they're questioning the evidence that forces young children to be masked, because they feel it's more, you know, I got a call from a dad who's got twins going into kindergarten. He said, one of his children were wearing those masks, they were sick constantly, not from COVID, but from everything else. He was constantly having to take them to the doctor because those masks are catching, you know, that, all the germs and stuff that gets, you know, that they pick up from this there and there, and young children are also not probably as diligent about not touching their face, not playing with the mask, not doing all those things. So, you know, parents are very, very, very concerned about masking their children. Special needs parents are very concerned about masking children, because a lot of these children cannot speak, cannot communicate, and the one way they do communicate is by making noises and facial expressions. So all that is a very big concern. Parents are concerned about whether they will be required to wear a mask outside in 90-degree weather. That might be a question for, because they consider that a very unhealthy situation. I mean, when it's 85, 90 degrees outside and you ask children to wear a mask while they're outside running, I don't know if that's going to be a requirement or not, but they are concerned about it. They're concerned about, will there be exemptions for health issues and where those lie? And like I said, that one of the big questions is, you know, we're talking about all these variants coming down the pike, you know, are we going to mask our children indefinitely, kind of deal, you know? So, you know, they want to, they want to hear where there's going to be some point where we say we don't have to mask children in school. I don't know if you can answer that or have any ideas on that, because it just seems like it's going to be a never-ending situation, like flu is, we get flu season every year. All right, those that choose to get vaccinated, get vaccinated. People die from the flu, people die from pneumonia, which I was actually kind of surprised that people still die from, I don't know why, I didn't think people died from, or that it was that prevalent. But, you know, people are seeing their young children masked, and they think socially it's not healthy. Teenagers, we've had a lot of suicides and stuff going on. I've heard from parents that are still concerned that their children who have been able to be children this summer, okay, and have, you know, be at the pool and be with their friends in a normal environment, to now come back into the school system in a very confined, very, you know, and they're concerned about the social impact of that and the mental impact of that. Parents, you know, there were, some parents were concerned about whether you would test without their permission, clearly, I got that straight, and that will not happen. Clearly, I got that straight and that, that will not happen. Some parents ask, is a mask a medical device? Is that considered a medical device?
It's considered personal protective equipment.
Okay, so the answer to that one is no.
No.
So, I'm just going through a large list of concerns. And we already decided we are not going to do COVID testing on children, correct? Only athletes, that would be, if we pass this.
That's correct.
Only unvaccinated.
Unvaccinated athletes.
Mm-hmm, and those participating in high-risk extracurricular activities that put them at a higher risk for contracting COVID. Especially given that I think, Dr. Van, correct me if, was it 28, 29% of teenagers in Guilford County, age 12 to 17, are vaccinated right now?
That's correct.
Okay.
But I do want to point out, we are working with the Health Department and the state to make testing more readily available. And we can make that available in schools on a voluntary basis.
Voluntary, that's, that's fine. Masked shields. A lot of parents find masked shields much more child-friendly than these. You know, well, I've heard parents say that has irritated their child's face. There again, the cleanliness of these is questionable. The breathing comfort of these is questionable. I mean, even I, I'm sitting here doing this. You know, so are masked shields an option? Because what I hear when we talk about this is that we're trying to prevent the spray, right? So why would a masked shield not prevent the spray?
Because the way that they are not covering the face, so when you're talking and when you're, when those particles are, you know, coming out of your mouth and nose, there is nothing around here to prevent that from, from happening. So, right now, those particular ones are recommended for medical providers that together with the mask are preventing for any type of particle to enter the eyes, but not anything around the mouth and the nose.
Okay, now, you did bring up this study that said, because we did have, you know, you had Florida, you had charter schools that opened without, I don't think, a whole lot of masking in the beginning. I think at private schools. Yet, I'm not sure they saw a huge difference in the outcomes. You can correct me.
So, I'm not familiar with every study and don't pretend to be. I do know that our partners at the ABC Science Collaborative have reviewed every study that's come out. That's part of the reason we joined with them, is to have them do the analysis and then, then share that with us. I also know they're funded by NIH to do, they've been working with school districts across the country. I don't know if that includes Florida or not. And what they have found consistently across the world, not just in the United States, and that one of the largest studies has been right here in North Carolina with over a million schoolchildren, is that the critical difference is masking. And that that masking and vaccination right now are your two primary prevention strategies. And that's been consistent with, I don't know, they, they went into it with an idea of what the primary strategy would be, because they were looking at all of the things recommended by public health. But study after study after study that they've analyzed and shared. And Dr. Zimmerman also shared with our principals similar data this morning and that full report to the state legislature is there. So, you know, that, I guess it's a good news, bad news situation, but the good news is that schools can open safely even when you have higher levels of community spread. Because you'll remember that was one of our big concerns last year. Can we even open safely if numbers are going in the wrong direction in the broader community? They've answered that definitively, yes. But they've also answered definitively from their point of view and from the point of view of their scientists working on this, that the, a key strategy for doing that is masking. Especially given 12 and unders can't be vaccinated and we've got such a low percentage of teenagers vaccinated. And then you've got some of the biggest numbers happening in the primary workforce ages. None of that's a good combination.
You done? Kim?
I have concerns about students that would be required to have a mask on all day. Can you talk to me about how students did when they first returned to school? You know, when we opened up school fully and what the responses were, did we do any?
Sure, happy to. So, yes, I mean, all of us had that concern. I will tell you that the vast majority and our principals and teachers and everybody would say the adults ended up being much more concerned about it than the kids. The kids did fine, including many kids with special needs. They did just fine. They adapted, it became part of the routine. I'm not aware of any study, because this question has come up multiple times on the weekly calls with the ABC Science Collaborative. Does mean there isn't some out there. But looking at the more credible scientific studies, there's no connection between suicide and wearing a mask. There is a connection between social isolation, being out of school, and other kinds of trauma going on in, in somebody's life. There is some connection there and we're certainly seeing that in our district as well. But it's not tied to masking or not masking. And I think that's one reason the North Carolina Toolkit and the CDC and others are firmly coming down the side on, on opening and getting, you know, kids fully back in school. So, you know, kids did remarkably well. There's always one or two that couldn't, couldn't do it and had to have an alternative kind of situation. And our parents have had that choice with our two virtual academies as well. But in general, they've done really well. And we will continue to have the health exemption process that we used this year, which is a very specific process that our legal counsel, Elizabeth Troutman, helped, who's very familiar with disability and health laws, well as Ms. Wilson, helped outline that. And we followed that to the letter. So, it's not just, my child's uncomfortable, like, they need a health thing, or my child has asthma. In fact, one of the things that ABC doctors told us repeatedly is that if you are so sick that you can't wear a mask, you probably don't need to be in school at all. And so, you know, I think we just need, I think we found that we all adapted. And I think it is hard, because we had a more normal summer and things were easing up. Everybody felt like, wow, it's starting to end. And now, it's hitting us again. But, you know, our 12-year-olds aren't protected, our 12 and unders aren't protected, and our teenagers haven't gotten vaccinated at the rates we were hoping, at least not yet.
One other question, in regard to elementary school students, the times that students have the opportunity to take off a mask, am I clear on? It's when they eat and when they go out to play for elementary school students.
Yeah, eating or drinking or out to play. And they tip teachers stagger lunch and all of that to make that happen.
But we do realize that middle school students and high school students don't have recess, right? They don't really have the same opportunity of that relief as our elementary school students. Is there a way of allowing some type of autonomy with our middle schools and high schools to give those students that kind of relief? I don't know about scheduling, I don't, or any of those things, or more opportunities to eat outside and, and to give kids that serious break? Because I do think that there's an opportunity for, like, a compromise, a consensus, and putting people at ease around the wearing of the mask. And the final question I have is, is there a mask that is better than an other mask for this? You know, have you seen where a certain mask is better at preventing COVID than a other type of mask and having that flexibility?
I think Dr. Contreras wanted to answer that educational and high school and scheduling questions and then perhaps Dr. Van or Dr. Girard can answer the masking question.
Yeah. Thank you. So, you may recall, in the ESAR funds, we are building outdoor classrooms at every school. We also bought picnic tables so that more students can be outside. And we have been encouraging schools to hold classes outside as much as possible. Many of our schools actually already had outdoor classrooms, amphitheaters, and other things that you all have built over the decades that they never used, were overgrown, and we just simply never used that. We sent the facility staff out to cut the grass, to do whatever work was necessary to put those spaces back into use. But we have made it clear that in good weather, they should be doing writing outside, reading outside, PE outside, to give students as much opportunity, not just so much to take off the mask, but because fresh, to be outside in fresh air. And we should have been doing that in American schools all along. To answer the mask question, I know Dr. Van will get into that, but we took the advice about the best mask to wear and we bought those in mask, in masks, after we bought, after we learned what were the safest masks to purchase. I think part of the concern we see in schools is that students tend to wear, teachers tend to wear whatever they bring from home, even though we have purchased more than a million of the very best masks we could buy without getting into the medical mask that you need in hospitals. But people tend to bring in what they have from school at home, even though we have many, many masks available that may be of a higher grade, maybe safer to wear. Dr. Van?
The only thing that I wanted to add to that is the fact that there are a variety of different masks that are out there. Definitely, some of them are better than others, just like Superintendent Contreras says, but as long as they have three layers of protection within that mask, that's the minimum requirement or the best requirement that we have right now for, for those masks. So, like I said, there are cloth face coverings, there are these type of face coverings that I have on, which are not necessarily considered medical masks. And some of them may be easier to breathe through or not. I mean, I noted I've tried a variety of them over the last year and a half and some of them are a little bit easier to use or not. But all of them have at least three layers in them. And that's the recommendation that we have and OSHA has and the CDC has.
Right, and I think also the concern was, you know, like, the little people, you know, the coordination of being able to keep on the mask and maybe coughing in the mask. So, are there opportunities for students to get a clean mask, like, and things like that? If you see a child, you know, teachers swapping out and giving them something else, you know, that was a concern.
Thank you, Kim. Anita and then Deborah.
My questions are probably more for staff, but the first one is kind of a legal question. Is there law that allows this board to make a medical decision for a child?
I don't, no, we would not be making any medical decisions. I don't, I don't believe anybody would make a medical decision.
Okay, who will be conducting the testing at the schools? The athletes and the chorus and the band and all that?
Let me refresh you guys on the law about that, because that, that might be pertinent right now. You'll remember that probably, I'm guessing 15 years ago, there was a, excuse me, if I'm not taking my mask off so you can hear me better. There was a wave of concern about drug use at schools. And a number of school systems instituted a requirement that anyone who voluntarily participated in extracurricular activities was required to submit to drug testing as a condition of participating. That was challenged in court and upheld by the courts as a reasonable method of helping schools defeat drug use in their schools. And so this would be, once again, what you would be saying is, you don't have to participate in extracurricular activities, but if you choose to, one of the conditions of participating, because it's a higher risk of contagion, is to submit to voluntary testing. So I believe it would be upheld by the courts.
Okay, the question is, who's going to conduct the testing? Who will be doing that?
So, the state has a list of partners we can choose from as well as a lister, listing of approved vendors that we can choose from.
So, we will hire whoever's going to do the testing? It won't be the Health Department?
We don't hire, we partner with. This is free testing.
Okay.
They pay for it.
And I think this was answered, parental consent is required?
It's a condition of participating in these activities.
So you'll recall that any athlete who participates fills out a form that includes parental consent, includes parental consent to share medical information. Those are already a condition of almost every, certainly of every sport that's governed by the High School Athletics Association. There can't be that many, that's probably where we're going. So, in order to participate now, every parent gives permission for medical treatment and for those. That's a concurrent condition of participation in any sport governed by the High School Athletics.
But not normally for band or chorus?
Not normally for band or chorus.
But we'll get those forms?
I think for marching band, Ms. Wilson.
Oh, there, it might be. I, I only have reviewed the ones for, that are governed by the High School Athletics Association. There may be, I don't know.
Okay, so what staff testing will we be doing, if any? I'm just trying to get it in my head.
The staff doesn't do it, students do the testing themselves. And this, this is being done all over the country now. But we can also, as part of the program through the state, they can provide staff. We also, through ESAR funds, are hiring additional staff as well as use the nursing staff that we have through the county.
Okay, but the question is, are we?
Just to clarify, the four, excuse me, but for, like, coaches, athletic coaches or staff purchase who aren't vaccinated, who are participating with the students in these higher-risk activities, our recommendation is that we do test those employees. Everybody else would be voluntary.
So, if they had the shot, then they don't have to have the testing? And they don't have to follow the quarantine that we had before? What if they refuse to get the shot? They just, we keep testing them? Yes, all right, and I've asked the superintendent this already, so I know what her answer is, but what are the consequences if an employee or a student refuses to wear a mask?
We already have that issue, have had that issue now. They are called into HR and they are told they must wear a mask.
What about the student, though? If they just flat out say, I'm not going to do it, what do we, how do we handle them? What do we do with them?
Mr. Matton, have we had that situation?
I'm not aware that we've had that situation, but that would fall under the code of conduct.
Can you turn your mic on?
He doesn't have one.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not aware of a single incident where we've had a student flat out refusing, but it would fall under the code of conduct for insubordination?
Okay.
Just like if a student refuses to walk down the proper hallways, right? And so, the, the code of conduct lists out, depending on the nature of the violation, the kinds of consequences that a principal could administer. But what we encourage our principals to do is to work with families, involve families, emphasize the safety aspects of it and not take a punitive approach with every interaction.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so Dr. Van, one more question. Of the 37 people currently hospitalized, do you have the ages?
No, I believe that Ms. Jenkins asked the same question and I wrote it down as a follow-up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Deborah?
Yeah, just a couple of thoughts here as we're going. First off, when it comes to the masks, I really do appreciate the effort that we put into obtaining masks for our staff. And I do, I've also gotten several concerns about, from parents, about masking for students, especially younger students, and leaving a mask on all day. And I really believe that there is a pretty simple solution to that in that they do make in that they do make child-sized disposable surgical masks, and they even make them in all types of fun things. I bought tie-dye ones for my kids, they love them. If you are seriously concerned about buildup of whatever bacteria in your mask, buy disposable. Throw them away, have your child throw them away every four hours, at lunchtime and after school, whatever works for you. The next thing I would like to explore for just a minute, I do believe it was Linda earlier, that mentioned that, you know, there was concern about confusion between a positive diagnosis between flu and COVID. And then Anita also mentioned that the CDC had recalled one of the testing methodologies because of a potential false positive. And all of that is accurate, however. Excuse me. When we look at these viruses, we know one thing for certain, and that is that we have more than 600,000 people dead. And so the question in front of us is, is the differential between flu and COVID really that large of a point when we're talking about these numbers of people and our hospitalizations rising again, for the simple fact that both of them are indeed viruses? The transmission is not so different, and the methodology of prevention of transmission is not so different. So whether these illnesses are flu, or whether these illnesses are COVID, if we can stop either and hopefully both, we should. I think we're doing an excellent job heading towards getting our children back into standard instruction, which is fantastic, and I want that for my children very, very badly. However, putting these standard precautions in place is to keep them well regardless of which virus it is that we're looking at them catching. Whether it's flu doing the damage, whether it's COVID doing the damage, I'm not going to pretend that any of us in medicine are an all-seeing eye, and we can tell exactly which tests were wrong, and exactly who had what every single time, and clarify this with a crystal ball. We can't. But we can do our best to prevent any and all of it that we can, and those methodologies are very similar. That's all I got.
Mrs. Nepper, I thank you for your comments about the mask, and I want to remind parents that we have these child-sized, three- and four-ply mask in every single school. So no child has to wear a cloth mask that they're coughing into and cannot change. We have had them since the day that students returned to school in October, and we have them for all students pre-K through 12th grade. So we do have those available for students in the size that they need.
At one time, we went through all the matrix and stuff, and kind of hit a, this is when we're going to relax situation. Will we be going back through that to say, you know, at some point, there will be, hopefully, children won't have to wear masks? Or if we look at this and we're saying, this is for who knows how long? You know, we've just got to accept wearing masks as part of life? Or, I mean, parents are really a little concerned on where's the end? And so I'm questioning where we see, I mean, we're going to revisit it every 10 weeks. You know, we're at under 5% currently. You know, we did shove those matrix around a lot prior to, you know, pass. So, you know, I think parents want some comfort level in hoping that somewhere along their child, their child will be able to unmask somewhere along the line. So I just want to ask that we reiterate or re-go over those matrix and what we're looking for to make sure that we provide that opportunity to hopefully end this. Thanks.
Anita?
All right, last thing, I promise. Debra just made my point for me when she talked about the flu and the COVID, both being viruses. Flu kills a lot of people every year, the regular, normal flu, and we've never masked for it. Are we leaning toward masking for the regular flu during flu season in the future? I think that's a valid question.
So I think that there are a few points here that I would like to make, because there is a pretty significant difference between the flu virus and the SARS-CoV-2. First of all, the infectivity of the flu, even if it is a serious virus that can also kill, its infectivity power is not as high as the COVID-19, the SARS-CoV-2. So it lays in the molecular build of that particular virus. So right now, we know that the flu virus can potentially infect up to, let's say, three people, or a person it has the flu can infect between one to three people. But we also know that the COVID-19 can infect between seven and eight people. So it is more infectious, it has a different genetic buildup with more likely modifications in that genetic code. It also has more genetic code than the flu virus. So it is more likely for variants to arise from the SARS-CoV-2 than from the flu. There are specific proteins in the SARS-CoV-2 that are not in the flu. So there are molecular differences in these two viruses that change the pathogenicity of each one of these viruses. And the masks that have been used over the last year brought the flu season to a halt because of the fact that masks are efficient in stopping the spread of communicable disease. But it is the infectivity and the power and the transmissibility of SARS-CoV-2 that is a whole lot higher than the flu that allowed for this particular virus to evade some of our measures. So we're seeing benefits of wearing the masks in other areas as well.
And parents know that, and that's why they are concerned about future flu season mask-wearing. Any role of herd immunity in that? I mean, we've dealt with the flu for years, the flu shot changes every year because it mutates. Same thing with COVID, it mutates. So are the, just have a lot of medical questions, but... So are we changing the COVID shot because of the mutation as we do the flu shot? And I know that we virtually eradicated flu this past year, I understand that. So that's what leads to the parents' question. Are the kids going to mask up every year during flu season? It's a legitimate question.
So, right now, we do not have an answer to that question. And as far as the different vaccines that are being built every year for the flu, right now, we do not have any indication that the COVID-19 vaccine is going to go through that same process as the flu vaccine. So I know that there is a very enticing, let's say, practice of trying to compare the COVID-19 with the flu, but there are intrinsically different details in each one of these viruses and diseases that I would caution comparing them.
Are you finished, Anita?
I'm done.
No, I'm sure. Can I just make a statement? And then I'll come right to you, Diane. I just wanted to say, I think, you know, we've had major health burdens since we've been on this planet together, and they've evolved over time. I mean, tuberculosis, and typhoid fever, and influenza, and smallpox, and yellow fever. And I know this last year and a half feels like it's, you know, that this is something we'll be doing forever. But over the last 150 years, there have been major advancements in infectious disease and public health. And it's come from study and research and sanitation and immunizations and all of the things that we're talking about here today, that that's how we have protected our citizens. We're the largest employer in this county. I know we're talking a lot about students, but those students can't be in the schools without the adults. And the adults are the vulnerable population as well here. And when we have COVID patients in emergency care, in hospital beds, we don't have beds for heart attack patients, septic patients, other critically ill patients. And so this is just nothing to play with. And I think that our public health leaders and scientists have been incredibly diligent at providing the best information for where we are at this moment, and incredible advancements have been made, and we have to continue to exercise those protocols. And so, you know, my father's 85 years old, he has to wear a mask, he has stage IV lung cancer, and, you know, it's just part of what he has to do to, you know, to continue to try to survive this disease. I also have a five and nine-year-old that's with me just about every other day, and they're used to it, you know? They pop their mask on wherever we go, and it's just a part of what it is that we have to do now. And children are resilient and flexible and adaptable and just roll with it. So I think that, I appreciate the work that you're doing, educating the public, getting this information out, finding all kinds of methods and means to, you know, make sure that people can make the best decisions so that we can control this. And so that's all I have to add to that, but I appreciate you being here so much, Diane.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move approval of this recommendation, please.
Second.
All right, please vote. Debra, I'll get to you in just a minute.
I'm going to vote, but can I ask one more thing? Has every adult over the age of 12 had the opportunity to be vaccinated?
Um, let me see if I understand your question. Have they had an opportunity to be vaccinated?
Have there been sufficient vaccines?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Linda?
Yeah, I'm struggling because we've got 14 districts that haven't, and I don't understand why they have voted for option, and we have not, we're, you know, so I'm struggling.
Were we voting or discussed?
Well, I'm struggling, because, like I said, we've got 14 school districts that haven't, are voted for an option, to give parents options, and...
Well, then I'd like to struggle out loud too, because I didn't speak before, because I wanted to move the motion. So thank you, Dr. Van. Those districts made a decision before CDC data was out today, before the Academy of Pediatrics and others, so, but... We're making a decision tonight about this issue, not about the flu in the future, so.
All right. All right, Debra?
Yes.
Thank you. Did you vote for her, Betty? Okay. You can record her vote as a yes. Oh, her light went off, okay. Thank you. Passes by a vote of seven to two.
Six to two.
Six to two?
Yeah, passed out.
Oh, total votes, gotcha. And I'm sitting here looking at it too, I thought it was wrong. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, members of the board.
All right, let me find our agenda here. All right, we are now at item B, that was removed from the consent agenda, the sole source contracts. Dr. Contreras?
Yes, this evening, for your consideration, you have a list of sole source vendors. You are not actually voting on contracts this evening. You are actually voting just on companies who are sole source providers. This is a new requirement under the uniform guidance. You do have amount of future contracts, but we are not bringing the contracts forward at this time. You are just voting on the actual vendors, and Ms. Henry will explain that to you.
Good evening, Lord Bemers. We are bringing to you today sole source vendors, requesting that you approve the use of these sole source vendors. We do understand that we need to provide the reasons to you behind those sole source vendors. And so Dr. Oakley and I will do that at this time. Do you want to start with them?
Sure, so, good evening. Much of the sole source list is really just that. It's a sole provider of a service. And in many cases, the continuity of the service is what's important. So many of these partners have been supporting our district or a subset of schools over time. We have principals, have coaches, that they have sustainable relationships. I'll just talk a little bit about each one, and then we'll take any questions you have. Equal Opportunity Schools is a supplement to existing training that's happened over the course of the past three years. This is training that's already been in place by Equal Opportunity Schools, and we're continuing to seek that professional learning to make sure that we continue what we have in place, to make sure that underrepresented students are enrolled in advanced courses. College Board, this one's really simple. It's the sole provider of PSAT and SAT tests. No one else delivers the assessment, and we want to make sure our students are competitive in the college application process.
Can I slow down one at a time here? So I just get a couple of questions in on each one, so I don't...
Turn your mic on, Linda, if you have a question.
Yeah, can we go one at a time and let me ask a simple question occasionally? Like with the first one, equal opportunities, how long have we had them? We have had them, but how long have we had them?
Three years.
Three years. That makes more sense to why we might want to be doing sole source. Just a question. College Board, are we, what are we doing with that? Are we paying? What are we doing?
We buy the tests.
We're buying the tests. There again, this new, or have we been doing this?
We've given the SAT for decades.
Okay, so we've been doing this forever, buying the tests? And that's the only resource that we can buy it from?
College Board is the only provider of PSAT and SAT.
Are they buying them tonight? Are they approving? So before we get into this, we're not buying anything tonight. We're not asking the board to approve any contracts tonight. Tonight, we're approving sole source providers, so that in the future, if we bring contracts forward, they're already approved as sole source providers.
Right, and this is just part of a process?
That we must follow under the uniform guidelines.
And there's also, DP, North Carolina Department of Public Instruction also has a process that we're required, if we're using federal dollars that flow through the State Department, that they have an approval process as well. So we are required to document this information with them as well. In identifying sole source, you no longer have to compete. And one of the requirements for not competing is making sure that there's not other vendors out there that can provide the same service. Because, you know, if you read the Sole Source Justification Fact Sheet, one of the key things is you cannot do this to avoid competition. Correct?
It's not, you no longer have to compete. It's you cannot compete because there is no one else who provides that service.
Exactly, but there is a whole checklist, and that's the reason you're going through this current process, to identify why we're providing a sole source designation to a particular company. Is that not correct?
It's correct, but what's also correct is that we have 24 issued RFPs out of teaching and learning right now. So there are things that have to be bid, and then there's things that are sole source. And most of the things here are to ensure continuity for our schools.
I'm trying to help the public understand what's going on, okay? That's as simple as it is. I mean, that, you know, supposedly these sole source, there are other, there's not other people supposedly that can provide these same services. And clearly, or there's continuity with the first one. We've had them for three years, and that's the first one. The College Board is clearly the only one that provides that service. All right, so then we are at the Think Law, Professional Learning for Teachers Serving Academically Gifted.
So this is training that was started two years ago. This is a supplement to the training that's already in place by the company, but also expands the... but also expands the training to parents, which we've had requests for. Follett is a continuation of an existing ebook subscription. This is the only ebook subscription that's compatible with our library media inventory system, Destiny. So it really depends on how they interface with how you inventory books, how you keep up with what books kids are checking out, and how we make good informed decisions about updating media collections. Cognia used to be advanced ed. That's how schools get accredited. It's just maintaining the accreditation body as we move forward. Public Impact is a continuation of training. You'll recognize this as opportunity culture when we talk about public impact. This is a continuation. We've seen some success from extending the reach of our most effective teachers. We began this training with our first cohort of restart schools. So that's the Public Impact.
How many years has that been?
Three.
Three, okay.
Classroom Voses, I think is how it's pronounced. This one we did bid and only got one response. And then you rebid it, and you still get one response, and so by nature, sole source. And it's a digital French and Spanish textbook that goes all the way through the language levels for high school students. Studies Weekly is a really unique format of reading that does engage its students in lots of different literacy modalities, so kids can get a newsletter. First graders get a little newspaper, like they have an insect newspaper that comes. We've had, you know, positive feedback on those. We've used them in summer programs for several years. Discovery Education, also a continuation of a digital textbook subscription that supplements our instruction that we've been providing. It involves streaming lots of times if you see videos, being part of instructional delivery. Teachers are streaming those from Discovery Education. They can do things like visit the Smithsonian from their classroom. And then do you want to talk about TDI?
So TDI is the consortium that we are participating in with North Carolina A&amp;T State University, UNCG, Guilford County, and the city of Greensboro. And that consortium has access to millions of dollars of existing infrastructure that we already own in Guilford County. So that is not available to any other vendor, and it's going to offer free of charge internet access to our students.
Dana? Yes, I'm sorry.
Is there a time for questions? Is that now?
Yes, I think she's gone through them all.
Okay, I passed out an article. One of these that concerns me the most is Studies Weekly. I did a little research on them, and so did Education Week. And the one paragraph that causes me the greatest concern is they found more than, this was Education Week, found more than 400 examples of racial or ethnic bias, historical inaccuracies, age inappropriate content, and other errors in the materials. According to internal documents that were presented to the company's executive board that were recently provided to Education Week, the staff review team flagged about 100 as high priority fixes, which include biased language or age inappropriate content, such as descriptions of graphic violence. The review took place in the 2018 calendar year. The concerning part is there were 400 examples, and they only fixed 100. So apparently, according to Education Week, there are still 300 examples that are not what we want to be teaching the kids. So you said they're the only ones that provide this. I have real concerns, and I have the articles here, real concerns about the accuracy of what they're providing us.
Well, I want to thank you, Mrs. Sharp, for this article, which uses teaching tolerance to actually review this program, giving that teaching tolerance does such a wonderful job at looking at systemic and structural racism. So thank you for this, and I'll be glad to review it and have our CIO review it.
Okay.
It's a great reference.
That's that one. You explained on the high speed, that's we're going to be in partnership with A&amp;T, UNCG, the city and the county. Is everyone going to contribute about three and a half million? Just ask it.
So that's, so right now, we're only offering the, the access is going to only be offered to Guilford County School students. That's the pilot that we're doing, so right now, we are working with TDI to fund that piece.
So right now, the others aren't funding it for their students yet?
Right, that's right.
So what happens, and I know we're not voting on a contract, I get that. So what happens if the others say, oh, we're not spending three and a half million dollars to do that? Is it sustainable for us?
So the, what we're trying to do is a pilot, this model that we're trying to roll out and see how viable it is to our students, for our students. And then, once we determine that, other, the other organizations will be able to determine if that's something that they can utilize for their students as well. I think every organization's very interested in expanding this. They understand the importance of expanding this, not just for their students, but for Guilford County School students as well. And so, again, we're just looking at installing the tower, getting the devices out to Guilford County Schools' families, and then we'll move forward, once we see the results of that.
Who would own that tower?
TDI is going to own that tower.
Okay.
They'll, they'll have to get an easement from us because it'll be on our property. But TDI will, will own that. It's a separate organization, that they've created a separate organization for it. And it is the, UNCG is the fiscal agent for it.
Okay, and on the Voses, I think you said? I looked them up too, and it's like $499 per teacher, unlimited students, for French and Spanish. So that would do about 46 or 40, this amount of money would do 46 or 47 teachers, depending on...
We haven't negotiated the contract.
Well, that's listed on their site as the price.
I understand, but typically, it depends on the number of teachers that you're doing licenses for, the number of students who are in the class. I'm just saying, we haven't negotiated the contract, so I don't have the details.
So haven't we get a figure? I mean, it's not a figure, it's 24,000, but how do we base that?
So we, I mean, we have previous partnerships that we looked at, and we looked at their, when they have larger district contracts that have more than 15 or 20 teachers in a content area, they have a scaled pricing structure. So we work with the provider when it's time to negotiate the contract. But that's the general figure that we would, we would use in our planning. Again, we won't have the actual until we bring a contract.
I would like to pull one of the vendors on this, please. Studies Weekly, and ask the board to consider approval without this, just that one vendor, based on the review that Mrs. Sharp provided with teaching tolerance based on their longstanding anti-racism work.
Move approval?
I make a second motion.
I don't think the superintendent, superintendent is just asking staff to pull that off of here. So are you moving, are you moving to approve that with that piece taken off? And Kim second to that?
Yeah.
Let me make sure Deborah didn't have any questions. She didn't have any, Lisa? Okay. All right. Okay. You said you do, Deborah? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. All right, if you'll just set the device up, we can vote. Deborah?
Yes?
Thank you. All right, well, that passes unanimously? Yes?
I need to go back to that last vote. I need to get not this one back on the other vote. Don't I got it? Because there were three options. And did we designate what option we were doing? I mean, do you, was that not my understanding?
No, they were all three together.
There was a plan with three points.
Oh, okay, well, the way they presented it was three, I heard it as three options. So, okay, so we are going with teachers having to designate.
Their status, yeah, you're doing all three things.
Okay, well, then I voted correctly.
All right, we are now at, we have a closed session tonight?
No.
We did not? Okay, it just says we will address one, but we don't. So we're now at board member comments. Thank you. Winston? Start with you.
I do want to thank the staff and Dr. Van for all of the work that they're doing to analyze data, put systems in place, so that we can open schools and keep our staff safe, keep students safe, and encourage people in the public, get vaccinated, and mask up, and wash your hands, and do all of the things so that kids can be back in school. I had the great honor and pleasure today to represent Chairwoman Green, Hayes Green, at our principal and assistant principal leadership institute today. So to be in the room with our school leaders and the leadership team, and just to really be in awe of all that they have done this past year. There was a tremendous video shared. I know it'll be shared out publicly, may have already been today through social media, that really has students talking about this past year and educators talking about this past year, and all that it meant to them, all that they have accomplished, all that they long for and hope for for the coming year. But just incredibly inspiring, great recognition of our principals and our assistant principals. Dr. Contreras did a phenomenal job. She is clearly a master teacher in talking about science, and data, and history, and quoting literature and poetry to really, and social activists and academics to really inspire our leaders to bring it every day. So it was a wonderful morning, and I just want to say thank you so much to all of those school leaders, to our principals and our APs, and how much you mean to all of us, and how much you mean to those students. So it was a great morning. I want to thank all the staff, Tiffany Perkins, the folks at Induction and Success. Most people don't know what all that means, but it's really about training and onboarding and pouring into our educators and our administrators, which they do so well. So I know our staff here tonight have had a really long day because they were all there early this morning and playing various roles. So it was an incredibly inspiring morning, and makes me really excited about what we can do to open schools, and just appreciate the work that we're doing to keep kids safe, so thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
I do appreciate all the hard work that everybody's going through and getting ready to, getting us ready because school is right around the corner. And it's amazing. I know everybody's working hard to do that, so I appreciate that. I've heard good things about summer school as well. I mean, I think that's gone fairly well. So we appreciate you, and I'm just hoping that our horizons are going to look better by August when school starts. Let's, let's put it that way. So thank you, enjoy the rest of your, what little you have of your summer, and take advantage of it.
Thank you. Diane?
Communication is going to be key to our more than 10,000 employees because the rumor mill is incredible. And as we know, misinformation, for some reason, and Dr. Carr, maybe you know why, seems to fly faster than correct information. So I think that in order to have our, our employees be on board with the fact that we're trying to make the best decision for their behalf, as well as for the students, however you can say it, because I know you say, well, we put it in an email to them. If they don't read them, or they're, they get mistranslated by the time they get to the staff. So it's going to be important for us to make sure that communication and how we communicate, and that we don't make people feel that we're forcing them. But all of us have to do things that perhaps are not what we would like to do. I am not a fan of shots, but, you know, I had to, you know, put my, you know, big girl britches on and get stuck. So if that's what we got to do, if we got to wear a mask, we got to wear a mask. And if I may, because we may not get the public opportunity, I realize that Dr. Carr is leaving us. And for me, at least, Dr. Carr has been invaluable. And I'm going to miss you more than you know. Because wisdom is something that you cannot put a price tag on. Institutional knowledge is something you can't put a price tag on. Being a decent human being is priceless. And I have just, I have just enjoyed having the opportunity to learn from you, to strategize with you, and to have you as a part of the GCS team. And so I can't make you a big enough Christmas sled to say thank you. But just know that I'm going to miss you, and thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Anita?
I too want to thank Dr. Carr. She's, she's taken us through some good times and some not so good times. And just know that I appreciate you and your family and what you have meant to the school system, and wish you well as Z Smith. Want to thank all of my principals who are working diligently. They're early, they're late, they're working hard, getting ready for school. I'm sorry, parents, that the kids are going to be forced to wear masks when we know that their transmission rate is not anything like the adults who have had opportunity to get shots and have chosen not to do so. That's personal choice, and I'm not saying they're right or wrong. Some things just are. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
I would just like to, just a minute, and welcome everyone back to school as we start to come back in the next two, three, and four weeks. I've gotten a lot of updates from friends who are educators. Our teachers are getting their classrooms ready, they're pulling in supplies, they're excited. And thank you, thank you, thank you to our teachers and our in-house admins who are getting everything together for our students and trying to help us make this return safe. We appreciate you guys so, so, so much. Dr. Carr, all right, look, I had to have this talk with Dr. Watlington too. You guys got to quit leaving me. Like I said to him, I'm too new to do this without you guys. You've been such a great resource for me. You've answered a million of my questions and every harebrained thing that I've cooked up. So thank you, we will miss you, and best wishes wherever you go. I know that you will be absolutely fabulous. And finally, I'll let you guys know that I'm going to miss the next couple meetings because in 10 days, we will have the last Napper. So I'll not see you guys for the August meeting.
So you say.
I'll not see you guys for the early August meetings, but I'll be back as soon as I can, so thank you, everybody.
Thank you, and we look forward to seeing you and the new Napper.
I'd like to say thanks to Dulian High School for allowing the site to be a vaccination site. Also, thanks to all the principals, the staff members, and teachers for getting ready to bring our little loved ones back to school in a safe manner. I encourage all our students to continue to read at least 30 minutes a day. You know, reading is fundamental. And to Dr. Van, thank you for the information that we received tonight to make the choice, to make the decision how to bring our students back safely. And to Dr. Carr, I thank you for your leadership. Thank you for many years you've put, been here in Guilford County Schools, and I know you do a tremendous job. Schools. And I know you do a tremendous job where you're going. And thank you.
Thank you. Kim?
I am so glad that I'm a part of the school board, even though we have to make these very difficult decisions. But I do believe that we do it when we get good information, the right information, and that to the community at large, I would just like to say that we're not making this decision, you know, just based on one person. You know, we have to make decisions based on 70,000 students, and 10,000 employees and staff that are part of the Guilford County School System. And that's how we base a lot of these decisions. And it's important for us to get it right, and that we want to protect a community of people, right? As the largest employer, we are protecting Guilford County to a degree, and along with, you know, others, and, you know, having the right equipment. And, you know, choices is great, but lots of times, we don't have a choice. And the choice is, is that we're going to choose health, right? We're going to choose putting some other things in place, and a holistic approach about our health. I think one thing the pandemic has definitely brought to our attention is, is that we, we need better food in our communities, right? We need good to drink more water. We need to be doing all of these things to promote a healthy environment, right? Because I don't want to rely on a vaccination for my health, right? No matter where COVID is going, there are some other moving parts that we have to think about outside of wearing a mask as well. So I know that in the future, I hope, I want people to think about a more holistic approach in our lifestyles, and getting enough sleep, you know, you know, is important for students and the health of everyone. So these are the things that I think that we need to start to think about and add to why we're doing what we're doing, right? Add that holistic approach to, to health. This is a health concern, and a health crisis, I believe, that we've been a part of. And that, coming to those realizations, that I know personally, I've had to change some things about how I'm going to live and go forward as well. I want to remind people about the annual Back to School Bash with the High Point Schools to be held on Saturday, August 14th, between 11:00 and 1:00 p.m. at the Carl Chavis Y, to make sure that those schools, make sure that you participate in that. High Point School Principals, or their designee, as well as other school personnel, will be on site to meet and greet students, and hand out book bags. And that's very important, in getting our kids back to school with everything that they need, and getting them excited about going back to school. That's important, that we be excited. And I'm glad that I'll be able to go visit schools once again, and finally get to the rest of the schools where I haven't had an opportunity to visit. Thank you.
Thank you. And Nora Carr, Dr. Carr, you weren't Dr. Carr when I got here, but it has been a pleasure getting to know you and working with you over the years. I have especially appreciated our historical timeline work, and some of the other opportunities that we've had to dig up things together, and enjoy reading all of the things that you have been writing and sharing about public education over the years. And I will miss you, but I know where you will be. And so I look forward to hearing about what you're doing, and being able to get in touch with you whenever I want to. You just don't have to answer the phone this time. So thank you, and you will be missed. I also want to say that I just had the honor and privilege of scoring the, is it the Hubert Humphrey Awards? And all of the schools' submissions were so amazing. I'm not going to say more, because Marshall's looking at me like, cut. But anyway, I just trying to figure out how to fundraise. For whoever doesn't get the award, will be able to implement their projects. And so that was, that was a time-consuming, but incredibly worthwhile opportunity and experience. And lastly, there's a number of community-based organizations. The Gate City Coalition, Black Girls and Women Matter, the Black Pearl Society, and the Racial Equity Institute are hosting the Community Revival Project. We're doing some Neighborhood Watch Nights, where we're watching movies. And we launched our first one July 16th at two locations, at Peeler Recreation Center, and at the Carl Chavis Y in High Point. And we had outdoor movie equipment and screens. We had food trucks, and children, Children's Corner, where kids played. And we had all of those glow-in-the-dark stuff, so that was a lot of fun. And a great showing there. We had a good showing in High Point, but our projector blew. We didn't have the, we didn't have the right equipment or something. We blew a fuse, so we got to hang out for a while, eat snow cones, and, and fellowship with community. Our next one, and that, that night, we watched 13th. And then this one, this Friday, July 30th, is from 8:00 to 10:00, because that's when it gets dark at night. So the food is free. We just ask for people to bring a blanket or a chair, bring your children. One will be the People's Market at 1417 Glenwood Avenue. Another one will be the Porch Project, Black Lunch Tables, at 118 East Bragg Street. And then the one in High Point will be at Mount Zion Baptist Church at 753 Washington Street. And we will be watching Push Out by Monique Morris. So we hope to see you out. And then we'll have our, one for the end of the summer. We hope to continue these indoors as the weather gets cool, but we will continue these indoors. But our next one will be August the 13th, and I'll share the location and information for that one. We will be watching the Children's March about the desegregation of Birmingham, Alabama. So we're doing some community education. And, you know, feel free to come out and just be in relationship with the community that, you know, doesn't often get to, we're just, we're just not proximate to, that we need to be, to all members of our community. And so we're hosting these in locations where people can get to them, can walk to them. And so it was a lot of fun, and I'm looking forward to this Friday night. So.
I move for adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, well, have a great evening, staff and visitors. Thank you, if there are any here. They're gorgeous.